School presentations, parent groups, open to the public. We'll have our superintendent's report, our correspondence and board comments, our consent agenda. We will then have a second executive session and we will then adjourn the meeting. There is one correction on the agenda. On page one of the consent agenda, letter C, appointments, the salary should read $27,275 rather than the $27,225 as listed. Do we have any student presentations tonight?
Hi, my name is Tyler Erickson. I'm the treasurer of the National Art Society and a senior here at Beacon High School. The National Art Society has currently been working on a big project, so we want to raise awareness for autism, and of course, April is Autism Awareness Month. So, one of our big pushes has been Go Blue Day. And so, some of the things that we've been doing to raise money for autism awareness, which will be put towards an autism walk on April 26th at the Dutch County Fairgrounds, is that we've been selling certain things. So, right now, he's going to pass out just a little flyer or a little card to remind you of the autism walk. And here, we've been selling the cafeteria. We have these pins right here. We also have bracelets. We have bumper stickers, and then we have these little pins that we're all wearing right here. And so, we've been selling them for a dollar to a piece, and everyone gets to write their name on a sheet of paper with a puzzle piece on it. And I'm sure you've noticed, they're right up here on the glass part outside of the gallery. We've also went to businesses with jars like these, and we've been getting, you know, spare change or things like that from local businesses, or people, you know, buying from those businesses in order to go for our cause. So, now here's Zach with what we're doing on Go Blue Day.
So, yeah, we talked about it at the last meeting, I believe it was, but, you know, just to keep going, let you know we're still here, we're still working. It's still on the, it's on the 14th, coming up next week. During the school day, we're going to have two presentations for the students. We have a PowerPoint ready, and it's going to be us, the National Art Society students, talking about autism, what we've learned and what we can help spread awareness about. And then that night at 6:30 here in the theater, we're going to have one for the community. The elementary schoolers, we're sending flyers home with them, trying to get as much awareness as we can for people to come. And we'll be having, hopefully, a couple of parents speak of students, of their kids with autism, and a, another person from the Anderson School for Autism who we've been contacting, hopefully be able to make it. And we'll have a, a little bit of a longer presentation for the parents and people of the community. So, that's the big plan. And then we'll continue raising money after that until the 26th, which is the day of the walk, that hopefully, the entire National Society will go together to make the donation and do the walk together.
That's great.
So, thank you, and hopefully, we'll see you on the 14th. Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tyler Erickson once again. So, as you can see, I'm representing a different organization this time. So, I'm also the vice president of the Beacon Players Drama Club, which is actually rehearsing right now, right in the theater. We just wanted to get the word out there that our show is this coming weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, Friday and Saturday, our show is at 7 o'clock, it's Pippin, and at Sunday, it's at 2 o'clock. We're working really hard for this. I know, for the past two weeks, I've been here, you know, 14, 15 hours a day, you know, right from the, the morning until 9 o'clock at night. So, it's a, definitely like a very large production that it all comes together, and it's going to be really great. So, we'd just love to see you all there. So, thank you.
Open to the public. Mr. Stark?
Can I direct it to Mary Exchisone, if I may have to give the answer? You had mentioned percentage of reserves that can be kept, you said it's a 4%. Are we at, with this new budget, and you're transferring a million dollars into what will be the new budget, that 2.5 that will be left, is that within the 4% that you were talking about in terms of wanting to keep for reserve? Also, you mentioned that our Moody's rating had increased. Can you tell us what the Moody's rating is currently? You had also mentioned, Mr. White had asked a question about gap elimination for those in the public that aren't familiar with all the alphabets that relate to education. Can you also explain what the gap is, you know, what it stands for? And finally, I know that there's a, the district has tremendous time trying to find substitutes in the various buildings. And, you know, I substitute here in the district, I spend a lot of time here at the high school, I also spend time at Sergeant Avenue. And currently, our pay is $72 a day for a full day, $36 a day for half day. Often, if I've come to the high school, not often, but on occasion, for a half day, maybe like four classes instead of, you know, customary three for a half day. I do know that, in talking with Mrs. Atwell, the fee for that substitutes are paid is not something that the Beacon Teachers Association is responsible to negotiate. Substitutes are not part of a bargaining unit. It is something that comes from the board itself and from central office. A number of schools in the, in the area pay considerable amount more. I am aware that teachers, like here at the high school, for example, get paid an additional $25 if they cover a class for one of their colleagues, you know, substitute for them because they're out. So, if you have five teachers that are covering one class for a teacher that is out, it's costing the district $125 for that day. I know $72 is a whole lot cheaper, but if you would be considerate, the thought of maybe increasing the rate to $100 a day for substitutes, you may in fact get more people willing to substitute here in the district. Right across the river in Newburgh, I know it's over $100 a day. I know it's substantially more in Wapanders. I don't, I'm not sure what is over in, you know, Pine Bush where Mr. White is, or Walker, rather, I'm sorry, where you are. But it's something that I would like for the, for the board and for central office to consider.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wished to speak?
Actually, I, I didn't sign up, sorry about that. Just a couple of reminders. Kim Atwell, president of Beacon Teachers Association. Just a couple of reminders, I know at the last meeting I did announce that the BTA is hosting a Senior Citizen Pancake Breakfast at the Knights of Columbus. It's soon approaching. It's April 26th. It begins at 7 o'clock in the morning, and I think it goes until we run out of pancakes. I think it's like 1 o'clock. So, we're, at this point, we have been in the community, we've been putting flyers up, and so, we are inviting all of you to attend as well and donate to the cause. Secondly, I just want to announce that this Thursday at 6 o'clock in the community room will be our next BPTP, the Beacon Parent Teacher Partnership with the BTA and the PTOs, PTA, PTSOs. And the agenda will come out, some of you are on that email distribution list. I think we're up to like 75 people on the distribution list, so although we don't get that as a turnout, certainly people are aware as to what, what is happening with the collaboration between the teachers and the parents. It would probably be a good idea to talk a little bit about upcoming events with the budget, and so people are aware as to what's happening. So, might be reaching out to some folks at central office, specifically to my right, to talk a little bit about that with the, with the parent groups. So, again, everybody's invited if you'd like to come at 6 o'clock this Thursday. Thank you.
I'll start.
It's me. Mr. Stark's first question was about reserves and fund balance. So, on the presentation, we talked about appropriating fund balance. So, basically, every year, we take $3.5 million, and we hope that we underspend our budget, and there's some additional revenues, and that's what we're using to offset the money. We also have reserves, unemployment reserve, we have tax SOCIARE reserve, so every year, we look at that to make sure that they're sufficient, they're audited as well. So, if they need to be reduced, we use that money also towards the $3.5 million. Fund balance is separate from that, so that's what the 4% is, that's the legal limit. Last year, we were at 3.8%, so a little bit less, but right in the ballpark. And I think what I mentioned in the presentation part was that the controller's office and the auditors were concerned about that, because you're using, you're relying on the same thing all the time. So, that's what's so good about this year's budget, we're able to use some, but not as much, and able to keep some aside. So, we're happy about that. The Moody's rating is a double A3, I believe, off the top of my head, and if not, I will correct that, and it's a very good rating. We go through a conference call with Moody's when we are about to borrow. And as you know, you know, Beacon has struggled in years past with their, their rating and, you know, their financial conditions, so now, we're ecstatic to have such a good rating and able to borrow at such a low rate. And the gap elimination adjustment, I don't believe gap has anything to stand for, but I don't, again, I won't swear to that. Gap meaning that the difference between what we were supposed to get in state aid and what we actually got would be a gap, would be the word. So, briefly, years ago, they changed the formula, we were given foundation aid, and there was a plan over five or six years to get all of this money in foundation aid, which didn't happen. So, the state didn't have the money, so they instituted this gap elimination, so they said, "Here is your foundation, and here is your money, but we don't have enough, so here is your elimination." And I, I know that they've been working to try to get the states the money that they are supposed to get, and gap elimination was always part of the reduction, and then some of it was given back. So, across the state, some people were not as fortunate as Beacon, so they, their gap elimination adjustment is kind of where it was before, but we've been very lucky about getting a lot of it back.
Thank you.
And the subs, I don't, Dr. Wapley, do you want to talk about the subs?
Actually, that was part of my report, not really an answer to your question, but some information about substitutes. Mrs. Calog and Dr. Severdin attended a job fair at New Paul's, and they did some recruiting, and they have attracted some young people who are not so worried about the pay, just so anxious to get started. And actually, it was a very diverse population, and we have some, some of the people that signed up to come to Beacon and substitute on tonight for approval, and there will be others coming as they complete their paperwork and get their information in. So, we felt that that was a really valuable recruiting that they did, and looking forward to meeting new, new substitutes. In addition to that, I'd like to talk a little bit about some upcoming parent nights. There's actually a parent night for the Parent Academy tomorrow night, and that's for parents of our ESL students, and it's K-12. Any ESL parents are invited to come, as well as anybody else from the community who would like to come and hear about our ESL program here and what it has to offer. That's tomorrow, 6:30 to 8:30. It's going to be right here at the high school, and we'll start in, in this room, and if the group gets too big, because I'm always helpful, we will get, get a bigger, go to a bigger location. Coming up for, and this information will be, you'll see it in the, we hope, you'll be seeing it in the Beacon Press, but we will also get these dates up on our website. We have Carly's Crusade, a parent evening about Carly's Crusade. We're going to have presentations for our students K-12, but it will also be an evening for parents of all students, K-12 in the district. And that evening will be April 28th from 7 to 8:30, and the presentation will be on safety for our younger students for abduction, but of course, any student. But also, there will be information about bullying, cyberbullying, so it's going to be a great night. We hope, all of these nights are really good, people have put a lot of time and effort in planning them, and I hope that we'll get a, a good crowd for that. We have our May 12th from 6:30 to 8:30. We have parents of children who are immigrants, and again, it's a night that every, anybody from the community or the school community are invited to come to talk a little bit about some, some of the benefits and programs that are available here in Beacon. Another night that we think is going to be a significant evening, and I honestly did not write down the date, I'm embarrassed, I'm, maybe Mrs. Atwell can be looking that up. It's going to be a night for girls in grades nine through 12, and we're hoping that their mothers or, or guardians or parents will attend with them. It's a night about being safe for dating and college campus awareness. And this is going to be presented by the people who do Carly's Crusade, so we're hoping to have mothers and daughters, but we'll, we'll take fathers as well, or guardians.
It is Wednesday, May 20th from 7 to 8:30.
Wednesday, May 20th.
7 to 8:30 at the high school.
7 to 8:30. All of these programs are right here at the high school. So, please come, we'd love to have you come and enjoy a great, great evenings of information. We are going to be beginning next month, a review from the state, our high, both our high school and the entire district will be going through a review. The state review for the high school will begin May 5th. And it's a two-day review, very intensive, they look at all aspects, from curriculum to our culture, to the vision, et cetera. It's quite intensive, and from that review, the state will be giving us feedback, and we will be developing, again, a strategic plan based upon that feedback. The state review is the 27th and 28th of May. They'll come back, and again, for the purpose of us developing a strategic plan, our current plans are posted on the web, our webpage, if you'd like to take a look at them. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple. For the parent nights for the ESL, and the parents, is this going to be someone there to translate for the parents?
Yes.
I just want to make sure. And also, the signage for Eric Romanio with the Hall of Fame, how are we making it up?
Yes, we have the, he just did the portrait, Kelly.
Last week.
Last week. So, we're looking to get the portrait up and the ladders up. We hope so.
Anything else, Anthony?
No, sir.
Anybody else?
Yes, I just want to make sure we have, can you give me the time?
May 12th is 6:30 to 8:30.
May have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items 10.2 through 10.7.
Second. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I would just like to pull 10.11 from the consent agenda, we'll talk separately.
So, now we just continue with the vote.
Right, now, now the vote will be on.
All in favor for 10.02 through 10.10. Okay? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Now you move that.
Okay, so, now we can discuss it?
Move it, second it, and then discuss it, like it's a standard unwisely.
Okay. So, may I have a motion to approve consent agenda, no, it's not consent agenda item, it still is?
10.11.
Okay. Motion to approve item 10.11.
Motion to approve item 10.11.
So, it's like a motion to approve.
No, it says second.
Oh, second. What are we doing?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, yeah. Comments or questions?
Yes, just for that, can you just describe how Stephanie Harvey's consultant group, like, how is it going to tie into what we have currently with the elementary, middle school, and high school, so they see, because, and, so that's the first one. How is it tying to what we have currently at the elementary, middle school, and high school for the reading programs?
Okay. So, Stephanie Harvey is a consultant who is, started working with our district this past conference day, and I think as I described to the board, she is an international consultant, she's written many books, her most famous book is Strategies That Work for Comprehension. And we current, our biggest challenge here in Beacon is literacy. We have students who struggle with reading at all grade levels, and we need to strengthen our literacy program. So, in the different times that I have been here, we have instituted a number of programs to do just exactly that. Mr. Mulhern has trained special education teachers at the high school, and a few at the middle school, elementary in the Wilson Reading Program. And we purchased foundations one time when I was here, which is a program developed by the same people, same philosophy, for the elementary level as a supplement to the Common Core. In addition to the Common Core, what we're discovering is what's missing from the Common Core, and something that Beacon had trained teachers for in the past, is the Readers and Writers Workshop. Common Core is very weak in writing skills, and we believe as a district, as many districts have also done, is that we need to supplement the Common Core with additional reading and writing skills. So, the work that Stephanie does and her team does, because there's a whole team of people in, including Ann Goodus.
Goodus.
Goodus, thank you, who I said in, to the board are sort of the rock stars of literacy. If you know about literacy people, they, they're kind of the most really significant people in terms of comprehension. We have children in the middle and high school who can decode words, they can read. It's not the reading itself that is the issue, it is gaining meaning from the words, comprehension. And that's what this particular group of people for our middle and high school really are bringing to us, are all of the comprehension skills that are needed. And with the Common Core and the vast increase of reading and the higher level of reading that is required for the Common Core, this is going to be fitting right into, number one, our biggest need area, and number two, it fits in along with the programs in the Common Core that we have in place.
I think it's great that we're addressing the reading, just because I, I think it needs to be worked up in the district from the elementary through to high school, so I think it's great that we're looking at consistency throughout the district. The concern I have is that, it sounds like we're doing a mishmash, like I know the foundations is like K to third grade that they're using right now at the elementary schools, it seemed like there was a presentation with Sergeant where they're doing something with the computers, but I don't know if that was District White, or is that just one, the fourth grade with Mrs. Ty and Mrs. Roach, I think they presented that one board meeting?
Reading class.
Is that just that one class, or is that?
Fourth grade.
Is the whole district fourth grade? Okay, so that's a whole district program. And so, this is just more of the comprehension and the thinking?
It's not a mishmash, because the programs that we have here were all developed, number one, under the same philosophy and actually, the same people, the same company. So, it's, they're all aligned, and adding in the comprehension skills, there is only so many comprehension skills. It's not like there is an unlimited number of comprehension skills, which is a little bit different than some of the skills that we work with teachers, there's just a vast bucket full of, of skills. But there are, there's a finite number of comprehension skills that you can teach to teachers that exist right now, and that's what they're going to bring and reinforce from the other programs. They're just a little bit stronger. Some of the programs we have focus more to decoding, sounds, the sound, letter sound association, fluency, et cetera. But this particular work that they bring, body of work that they bring to us, is specifically for comprehension.
So, we're going to spend this money, they're coming seven times to, to do, so Stephanie Harvey's coming, some of their consultants are coming in. So, are they going to be working with all teachers in those seven days, or are they working with a select few amount of teachers?
The way it works, it's a workshop model, there, there will be teachers who volunteer their classroom. They will be teaching in the classroom and using strategies that they have taught, and other teachers come and they, they get to watch teachers teach. And so, part of the process is watching each other and then debriefing the work that goes on. I think Karen, you could probably speak to that a little bit.
It's, it's really called embedded professional development, where they're going and they're working with a cohort of teachers, and they're pre-briefing with them, they're doing a demonstration lesson, debriefing afterward, and then working in another classroom the next day. So, when they come for their visits, it's a two-day trip typically. And, and then there's a debrief at the end of the day with all of the teachers to talk about, you know, next steps and where they can go and how, and, and ensure that they're going to be utilizing those strategies in the classrooms themselves. And then they come back and go deeper with those skills the next visit. And they're available via email, you know, throughout their, their time with, with us here at Beacon. So, it's, it's a model that has been successful in many districts, and when we have teachers that are working closely with consultants like this, it makes them more empowered to, to then take the strategies they're learning and then implement them themselves in the classroom, and then get feedback on how they're doing. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I understand the, the work of the consultants and Stephanie Harvey and that are coming in. My question, like, is it going to be a follow-up, or like, is the $123,000 that's estimated cost for it, is that, is that including the subs for, for the days, like, when the teachers are coming into the room for the workshops, is that like the whole encompassed cost of it, is that? No?
No, that, this is for the consult, this is the, that's the consulting.
Just the consulting department?
Yeah, yeah.
And are there going to be materials that we need to buy afterwards?
There are materials that we are buying this year. Our, and our purchases and the cost of the, this program is grant funded. So, all, all of this cost is coming through grants.
So, they, they're utilizing a comprehension toolkit, which is Common Core aligned, and, you know, complements the, the module work that they're, the teachers are doing currently as well, and all of that will be. as well, and all of that will be, the, the materials cost is coming out of a particular grant completely, so it will not be in the budget, really.
So all classes are going to get these materials throughout the district from K to 12?
Well, 12th grade does not have the comprehension, the, the high school doesn't.
They're going to get the strategies that she's presenting, but the materials are more for the elementary, or more?
They're different materials.
Yeah, the comprehension toolkits are for K-8, and the, the high school, they'll be using a couple of other different resources that will be part of the materials fee.
No, I got one question. Are they available for the teachers after they spend the two days here? If they have any questions, they are available, they can communicate through email or phone?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. It's an ongoing relationship, really, that the teachers will have with the consultants.
But that one can, going to cost as an extra?
No, she just said that, that everything was included. Yes, it's all included.
Any questions answered?
Yeah, I have better understanding, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a motion for executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the point of history of a particular individual, and the board is not expected to take action after executive session.
Second. All right, before we say who's in favor, Dr. Walkley needs to.
Sorry, I have an announcement. We are, we have a great relationship with the DIA, we are continuing to develop our relationships with the DIA, and we met with the DIA today and our content coordinator, and we are starting a really interesting program through the high school that will go into next year, and we will become part of a community, a community free day. And I wanted to let everybody in Beacon know about the community free days, because they're happening throughout the year, but we will be sponsored in a community free day next year. Every weekend, Beacon residents can go to the DIA for free, and there is a special community day where they put together programs for children, they can stay there all day, they do art all day long at the DIA, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and this Saturday, April 11th, is one of their community free days. So, you know, take advantage of that, and next year, we'll be telling you about the Beacon Day at the DIA. Thanks.
Okay.